I'd like to call this meeting of the Ellsworth Planning Board to order, April 7th, 2021, 5:30 PM. Would the members of the planning board acknowledge yourselves, please?
John Galio.
Mark Bridge.
Go ahead, Neilson.
Nelson Gill.
John, thank Chair.
Mark Bridge.
Shreeblond Alternates.
Ah-ha. Very good. The next item is adoption of the minutes from the March 3rd meeting. Is anyone in motion regarding on minutes, please?
Move to accept.
Say it again.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise a hand. Thank you, minutes are adopted. The next item of business is a sketch plan for a major use site development entitled Ellsworth Renewables for Nexamp Solar LLC. The proposal is to construct a 25-acre solar energy facility on 94.6 acre parcel, tax map 37 lots 20 and 20-1, owned by Albert Gaspar and located on the Bucksport Road in the rural and drinking water zones. Is someone representing the applicant, please?
Yes, my name is Christopher Ryan, I'm with Meridian Associates. We are the site engineers for the project. And also Henry Barrett from Nexamp is here.
But go ahead and explain the project to us, please.
Sure, do you need a two-screen share of plan for you, or or is that something you already have?
We have the plans for the benefit of the public, it might be good to display it here.
Okay. Sorry, just please bear with me for a moment. Okay, is that visible for everybody?
It is for me, I assume everyone else.
Yes.
Everybody good?
Alright, so as you stated, the parcel is approximately 94.6 acres. It's actually parcel lots 20 and 20-1 on tax map number 37 on Bucksport Road. It's located in the rural and the drinking water district, so you can see here's a dividing line. So basically, the front third is in the rural district, the northern two-thirds are in the drinking water district. The site is currently wooded, looks like it has been logged in the past, but it's regrown in. There is an existing entry driveway here, which we will, the plan is to utilize that existing entry point. There are wetlands on site, as you can see, mostly in the western, southwestern corner of the site. There is a stream that runs down the middle. The site drains via two culverts that cross under Bucksport Road. There are also a couple of what the environmental consultant classified as seasonal drains, which are basically, he described it as just these little ditches that have evolved over time to just drain portions of the site. And there are some other small isolated areas of wetlands scattered throughout. So what we're looking to do, or what the applicant is looking to do, go to the next page, is develop the site for a freestanding solar field. The idea is to utilize the existing entry point off of Bucksport Road, widen it to be a 20-foot wide gravel driveway that would span through the middle of the array. There'll be turnaround points halfway up near where the equipment pad would be. We are not proposing onsite battery storage at this time. And then also a turnaround at the end. So as is customary on these solar sites, now you can see sort of the limit of disturbance where the proposed tree line is. All the area within perimeter fence would have the trees removed and the stumps removed. All the area between the fence and the limited disturbance, the idea is to cut the trees but leave the stumps and all the undergrowth. The project would have, due to the size of the soils on site, we're going to be doing some confirmatory soil tests. So but for tonight, basically what we're initially planning on doing, since the site drains uphill to downhill in this direction, east to west, the idea is on the uphill side of the gravel road, most likely we would have a long grass infiltration swale that runs the length of it to prevent washout of the gravel road with, in a couple of collection points with culverts that go underneath. In the, right now, we show them in the locations of the existing seasonal drain, so that way we can maintain the existing drainage patterns. And then most likely in this location down here, if it's necessary, we would probably propose a shallow stormwater basin here. There's an area where the contours run relatively flat, so we could have, we could have that there. And also, since it's flat enough, we would be able to do an outlet with a level spreader that confirms, conforms to the local stormwater regulation for level spreaders. It's, it's a pretty simple site, these solar sites. It's basically, we would try to follow, use the existing topography as much as possible to minimize the amount of onsite grading other than in the areas of the road here where we needed to normalize and flatten out the slopes on either side of the roadway. The idea is, we want to try to minimize as much onsite grading as possible. But these would be, the array would be fixed tilt panels. We would have one equipment pad and with conduit running underground up to a certain point here where we, there's a series of utility poles. Half of them are usually on the owner's side and half of them are on the utility side to allow access, easy access from the utility operator. We are currently working with our environmental consultant to put together a natural resource permit and we're going to be filing with main DEP for their site law application. So we wanted to, tonight, hopefully get some input from the board to see if there's any things that stand out to you as something you definitely don't want to see, or you want us to have change on the project. And just to get your general input before we start, or before we submit for the formal filing for the
Have you seen the TRT report from the planning office?
The technical review, yeah.
Okay, so you so you have those notes reflected in them, okay. So, planning board, any questions or comments?
Yep, I'll start off, John, Mr. Chairman. I guess a couple of comments first for staff. In the application, any butters notice? There's a, down at the bottom of the left-hand, the first column down at the bottom, it lists Roy Leeds. And then just to the right of that, list the homeowners association of Village Way. If you remember, this is the tiny house subdivision. And actually, Mr. Leeds no longer owns that. It's own, there's two separate parcels, remember, when we approved it, there was about 15 lots with about about 115 acres. And then there was a 20-acre parcel, what I'm getting at is that this is the, this is a property about 130 acres that is right adjacent to the lot that they're looking to develop, so I just wondering if the homeowners association of Village Way has been actually notified. It doesn't appear, looking at this butters list, that they were contacted. Can somebody from staff answer?
That's a good question, the question marks. I'm not really involved in handling the actual notices, maybe Carrie can discuss the process a bit.
If you went to, if you went to the tax maps, I mean Roy, Mr. Leeds sold us about 14, 15 months ago. So the tax map does have Village Way's mailing address. And where they're right adjacent to this property, I think it's very important that they be notified of the developments, proposed development.
Well, we can definitely make sure that it gets corrected for the preliminary submission.
Okay.
When you say, basically you mean across the street, right, or is it on the same side of the road?
No, it's on the same side of the road, remember, it's the tiny house subdivision on the top of the hill.
Okay.
This is right adjacent to Mr. Gaspar's piece of property that the solar farm wants to develop.
Okay.
Just to the west. I think actually their address is 332 Georges Pond Road in Franklin. Another question for staff is, as in the last solar farm that was on the Bucksport Road that's close to Branch Lake, requested that John Whedon perhaps could attend the preliminary meeting for, for the board to be able to ask him some questions.
Sure, I think if you'd like him to do that, he would be happy to.
Okay, then. Mr. Ryan, you said the, the stream that you have marked flows off the property towards the Bucksport Road, is that correct?
Yes.
Now, would, would you anticipate where the east side of the property where a lot of the panels are going to be slopes downhill, I mean, would any this water flow work its way towards Branch Lake, do you believe?
Branch Lake being the, up here to the north?
Yeah, well, be, yeah, yes, to the north.
No, I don't think so, everything, everything on the site runs west, east to west, and then eventually south towards the road. It's all topography that we have. A larger, if you, if you go back on the other side of this little boulder's way,
Right.
there is an area of topography that runs out this way. But we won't be, we won't be getting near that, all our work is on this side of boulder's way, and you can see all the topography runs this way. So we're not, we're not going to be doing anything that's going to be running north.
It's just to the north of your property, the Gaspar property would be the Finn family property.
Yeah, the William Finn.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, we're not proposing any work, anything that's going to, we're not going to be doing any work on this, on this piece of the property.
Presume that there'll be fencing around this, this project?
Yes, there is a chain link perimeter fence. Let's see if I can pan over a little bit.
No, that's okay, I just want to double check. My question is, the last solar farm we approved, and I thought it was a good idea, the first couple ones we didn't, but the the last one, I think is the Gil Patrick Solar, if I'm not mistaken, they were gonna raise the fence up like six or 12 inches off the ground to allow critters to go back and forth, so they wouldn't get blocked by the fencing. Is that something you do or don't do, or? I thought it was a good idea.
And I'll, I'll let Henry answer this one, but my experience is that normally they do that to allow small animals access to the meadow habitat, that would be the final condition, but I'll let, I'll let Henry speak to that.
Yeah, hi, this is, this is Henry Barrett from Nexamp, and will be the EPC contractor and owner-operator of the, of this array. And yeah, we've definitely done that in, in past projects, and if that's something that the board would, would like to see, we're certainly happy to, to do that.
I thought it was a good idea, just allows animals free, free range in there, small animals.
Yeah, certainly.
My next question is, and I sent the board members late this afternoon a, a copy of a spreadsheet. Hopefully you got it, it was kind of a strange way I sent it, but I asked staff to, to do a little spreadsheet of the previous solar farms we've approved. It was more for informational type purposes, I mean, how many solar panels they had, the wattage. But I was also interested in, it was the decommissioning cost and the decommissioning cost per panel. And what I found was a little surprising is that the, the four projects we've approved so far, and maybe we're not comparing apples to oranges, but range from $8.40 a panel to $16.24 a panel. I know on these past ones, I mean, we've just taken the, the developer's word for the decommissioning cost. And I just wonder, and I'm not, you know, accusing the, the new applicant, I'm, I'm just thinking we need to maybe better, get a better handle on decommissioning costs to make sure that we're getting this right. And it just seems to be the four that we've approved so far has a wide range of, of costs, and I just don't want the taxpayers, you know, taking a hit on this.
John, I was, I was looking at that too, and one of the things that kind of jumped out at me is, it does seem like the cost per panel decreases as the size of the array grows. And I guess, the way I would ask the question to the developers, is there an efficiency there? Is there a kind of a scale that works in your favor for decommissioning per panel as the array gets larger? Again, we don't, we don't have a tremendous number of these projects, but from ones we see, the early trend seems to be less cost per panel to decommission the larger the array is.
Yes, if, if I may, that, that is certainly the case, that there is certainly cost, cost efficiencies there with, with larger projects. And, and also on these larger projects that go through the DEP process, you know, they have to approve our decommissioning plan as well, which includes a cost estimate. So DEP takes a look at this as, as well.
I know, Henry, on, on at least two of the previous, they used NYSERTA, New York State Energy Research and Development Authority, I guess is the go-to standard for the decommissioning costs. Is that what you plan on, on using, or is there?
Typically, we would, what we've done in, in past projects is, is have an engineer develop a, a cost estimate, taking, taking this specific site itself, and then you know, using that as, as the basis to develop that cost estimate. You know, I don't, we, we have a lot of projects in New York, and we use that out there, but I, I don't think we use the NYSERTA as sort of a blanket approach.
Okay, it just seems like a couple weren't, it just seemed to be the go-to people for it, but I would certainly go with what you give us. I mean, the only thing kind of along that line was I wonder if, if this is something we should have a peer review on, or just have an independent engineer look at the, to make sure that the, the costs are, are consistent. And certainly nothing we have to discuss today.
Or expanding our sample size too, and we, we only have the, the projects that we've done here in Ellsworth.
Right.
If other projects in other similar cities and geographies were included, I mean, a larger sample size might help the numbers kind of shake out.
My last question would be, in the application, after maybe Chris, on section seven, on page seven, it's part of the contract with the, the tenant and landlord. Do you, do you have that document handy?
The application itself, I, hang on, I can try to bring that up.
Section seven is defining the lease area constructing the facility landlord restrictions.
What page, I'm sorry, what page, section seven?
Yes, it's actually page seven of the option and ground lease. Seven of 35, it says.
I don't think I, I don't, the, the ground lease, I don't, I do not have that handy, I'm sorry.
Well, let me just read it, it's short. Says during the development and construction period, tenant may, at its discretion, determine the facility size and the specific location of the lease area, and the easements on the property by means of a survey. And such surveys shall then define the lease area and the easements, and shall be amendment to this lease as a revised Exhibit B. Obviously, I'm not a lawyer, but it kind of sounded like that said you could change the size, the location of your project.
I mean, I, I could tell you what we do, and maybe Henry can chime in on that too. Generally, once we permit a project like this and its location, it's pretty much there, the only, we, we do, my firm would, would eventually produce exhibit plans and all the title insurance plans that, that delineate the, the lease area and any easements on the site, access and utility. But Jim, it's been my experience that once the outline of the project is established, then that's it, is the only type of variance we've encountered is if in, say, in the process of installing the perimeter fence, the crew encounters some rock outcroppings, and they have to make variances in the path of the fence, but generally, that's, that's not been my practice, I mean, that's not been our, my company's practice, and we've permitted probably two dozen of these projects in Massachusetts and a couple in Maine, and so I guess to maybe allay your fears, no, I mean, that's not, that's certainly not the intent. I mean, we have to design measures in the, in the appropriate locations where they're going to work, and we can't just, we can't just move them around, or else the design won't work. In terms of where we're planning on putting the road, where we're planning on putting the panels, they pretty much, once they've been analyzed by us at Nexamp as far as their shading, they pretty much have to go where they're designed to go. Like I said, with very few exceptions, sometimes you may have the end of a panel row where they just encounter a lot of rock or something, they have to move a, a small section of panels at the end of a different row. But generally, we try to adhere to what's, certainly what's been approved, we don't want to, if we get an approval, we don't want to, we can't really change anything, because we don't want to have to go back in front of the planning board to, for an amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe that's a long-winded answer, I, I hope that answered your question.
Yes, it did, thank you. And I'm all done, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else wish to participate in this?
I would like to participate.
Okay.
If I might. Mine are more questions about the site plan and so forth, and maybe these are things that, that have already been resolved, and I've just not aware of it, but let me just go through the questions I had. You had talked about the large, sometimes fairly large area or longer between the actual, what you show is the fence line and the, how do you phrase it, the limit of disturbance line, okay? And sometimes that's, you know, like, it looks like 50 or 100 feet, and sometimes it looks like longer than that. And my question is that, and that was going to be cleared down to stump, so they're taking trees down to, to stump level. And I was wondering why, it would seem to me that if you let trees there, it might be best, better for both present and future screening of the site and that sort of thing, just what was the thinking there?
Um, it's just usually, general, the reason why I say on the, on the eastern side, there's more of a distance between the edge of disturbance in the panels, because this is higher ground, so if I have, say, you know, we'll just take a number, the average height of the trees is, say, 60 feet.
Okay.
And it's about 25 or 30 feet higher in elevation, it's going to cast a much longer shadow, so that's generally, these sites, they're usually, there's a software package that the developers use called Helios, and they basically can take the three-dimensional surface of the land, and they can analyze, and it analyzes sort of the path of the sun through every single day of the year, and it will tell them sort of where the shade line is going to end. And, but yes, generally, they, they, they stump the big trees down, but all of the small stuff and all the undergrowth is left theirs to regrow. I mean, it, it serves two purposes, it lets everything regrow, plus it provides a buffer against any type of erosion that's going to happen, because all the undergrowth and the root systems are all still there.
Okay, I like that.
So as you could see on the western side, the tree line can be much closer.
Right.
Because they're lower in elevation.
Gotcha. Okay, in terms of, and I, and this is really a question for the, the fire guy, as much as anything else, there's turnarounds and so forth at the entrance midway and at the very end. Are those turnaround, have those turnarounds been reviewed, and are they upstuffed, as far as you're concerned?
Yes, they met all the expectations for our, our fire prevention ordinance as far as the roads, the key turns and stuff like that in the locations.
Fair enough. The one map, well, the one that's site planned in front of us, if you look at the far end, you know, furthest away from the entrance, there's a hammerhead down there, which I get that that's okay. The question I have is that somewhere there's, it's a vehicular gate down there, and I was wondering why that is?
Yeah, that's just, we usually provide one or two gates, so that during any given year, they will have a landscaping crew that comes in once, maybe twice a year to mow the insides here, and also they, they check around just to give them access to the outside of the site, so that's the fence line.
Okay, um, does the, do they need to get a, and this is a question for staff, I suppose, do they need to get a, a street number, placard, or anything like that for safety reasons or anything else?
I think that ultimately would be up to the assessing office, but I doubt that they would do that without a structure there, depends what their threshold for addressing is.
Hey, fire guy, you agree with that?
I do.
Okay. Um, what about talking to MDOT about the driveway entrance and so forth? It would seem that this is particularly important in this case, since, you know, Route 1 is, is fairly busy during the summer and so forth. Has there been contact with MDOT at this point, or is that still to come?
That's still to come, we will be required to get an access permit from MDOT, yes.
Okay, and that'll be part of the package at the next, next time we see you?
If, if we can get a, if we can get a response, yeah. And once we sort of finalize the, the design of the entrance, if, if nothing's changed, then we'll be submitting a plan to MDOT to get their input. I know they have to come out to the site and do their site distance procedures and things like that. But yes, hopefully, that's our hope, yes.
On the site plan, and you mentioned it in your presentation, there are a couple of ovals drawn, which are kind of sort of like detention ponds or something, is that right?
Yeah, and at this stage, we just wanted to identify, try to identify areas where we thought if, if, if they're required through our post-construction analysis from hydrology, those just are seeing the areas where we could most easily put a small surface basin if necessary.
And how does that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, just because of the, because we, you know, looking for flatter areas, things like that, natural low spots where you could put a place like that.
How does the, you know, if, 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 for example, the detention, a detention pond, as you've just described, goes in there, you know, how you know, how does the array work going across that? I assume it's kind of like a little depression for retention, I mean?
Yeah, well, we, we, we did put a note that, you know, the layout may have to be altered as needed. So if, if we did end up having to put something here, then some of these panels, we could relocate some of them on the ends of other rows or things like that. But we've actually designed on other sites, if it's a shallow enough depression, a lot of times, depending on the racking system used, the conduit is up under the panels. They can actually, you can actually put these right through a small depression like that. But most likely, anything in the middle here, if it's going to have to be more than eighteen inches deep, some of these panels would have to get relocated around, right?
And, and that'll be resolved by the time the, y'all come back?
Oh, yeah. No, the next time we see you, we'll have, we'll have our drainage system finalized. And it will be to a stage where everything, everything will be finalized. You'd have a better idea of what the final site conditions will look like.
Similarly, on the one side of the road, the driveway road thing that you're putting in there, you know, you talked about a swale or something that's going to go in there potentially, so the road doesn't wash, so your new road doesn't wash out. Am I to assume that the, I mean, the same sort of discussion about the, the solar panels, they might be pulled back a little bit from that road for the drainage situation or not?
Yeah, they may have to get pulled back about five feet.
Okay.
The drainage swale itself will probably be about six feet wide, so.
Okay. I mean, I suppose, I mean, can they even be cantilevered over that? I mean, that may not be useful, but.
I mean, the ends of these, they call them these clusters of panels, usually referred to as tables. Usually the ends of these hang over the rack, about a couple of feet, but no more than that, really. No more than sort of the width of one panel.
Okay, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I've got one question in two parts. The first part for Mr. Ryan there. You, when you were describing the site, initially you said there was no power storage, but I think you qualified it at this time. So my question to you is, is there the potential for there to be power storage on, on the site at some point? And the second half of the question for staff, if that were to happen, is there a separate permitting process? Would the developer, developer need to come back to the town? It seems like there'd be other implications in that, in that situation.
Yeah, I could, I could take that.
Yeah, okay.
So right now, we, we, there, there is no storage. We, we have the agreement with Versant that does not include storage. So for this purpose right now, there will not be a storage. You know, if things change at the state level, maybe a couple of years down the road, and it makes, you know, financial sense or, or another need for storage, we might look at, at adding it at that point. And if that happens, then, then I, I assume we would come back before the planning board to, you know, amend this plan, this permit, or, or go for a new permit at, at that point, if, if indeed we pursue that.
And for staff on our side, is that, I mean, would we concur? I, I hate hearing the word assuming these things. Would, would that be the process if they were to add storage in the future?
I think I'll have to give it a look, and it might depend. With, as with so many things, there is a separate use category for storage, but it's defined as standalone. Standalone energy storage systems, those are not a permitted use in the rural or the drinking water. But it wouldn't really be standalone, would it? So need to look at that definition. And then I don't really have a sense of how much space storage takes up. So there's also that to consider, whether it would meet a threshold or be substantial enough to be considered an amendment. I just don't have a, a picture of that.
And general, the types of storage units used in these developments, it's basically a, like a forty-foot shipping container with a concrete pad underneath it. So.
Thanks, Alena. It sounds like the, the, the use may be something the developer wants to keep in mind, just for potential in the future. All right, thank you. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, anyone else?
Just one other question, John. I, I didn't see it on the paperwork. Perhaps it's here. I know it's a four-point-nine MW, but how many solar panels do you estimate there'll be? And maybe I just missed it.
Yeah, I think it's going to be around probably twelve thousand panels. We haven't, it's not finalized yet. And they're always changing the, the actual wattage of the panels, which keeps increasing. So by the time we start construction, that may change, but it'll probably be in that, in that range of twelve thousand or so.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? I do have a quick question, and does any of this impact upon the stream?
Does it impact the stream? Yeah. Well, we're going to be staying outside of the seventy-five-foot stream buffer at all points. So I guess, my, I would, it's more, I suppose that's more of a question for environmental consultant, but there are going to be no direct impacts on the stream. The stream and the buffer zone will still be wooded. That won't change. There won't be any increases in stormwater that reach, that reaches the stream. Also, we're not, we're going to try to keep it, generally, we try to match or slightly decrease as is required, so as not to dry up the stream. But in my experience and in my opinion, no, we won't be, we shouldn't have any detrimental effects to this stream. Things should be able to flow as they are. The site will drain the same way it's always drained. Things might just get a little diverted here and there to allow for infiltration. But our intent is to try to have no negative impacts on the stream.
Thank you. Although this is not advertised as a public hearing, does any member of the public wish to comment upon this application? Nate, do you have anyone?
I have nothing on the Zoom side. I don't know if Carrie has anything.
Nope, no emails from the public.
They don't like us, do they? Anyhow.
If then. They have consummate faith in us, John.
Ah, I like that interpretation. Thank you. I feel so much better. Does the applicant have any questions for the planning board?
Not in terms of the design. I, I know we brought up the, the issue of some of the butters that may not have been properly listed on the, on the butters list. We're going to be having a public information session on the nineteenth via Zoom as required by main DEP. And if it's possible to get the, the names of the other butters, I'd like to try to get those as soon as possible so that I can send out a notice to them to make sure that they were properly notified the number of days ahead of time. So I don't know if that's possible.
Chris, I can check with our assessing department and get that information for you. The current butters list was pulled from the city's GIS system. But we can certainly look into any properties that may have been sold recently where that information hasn't been updated throughout GIS. But I can get that list to you tomorrow.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I just want to make sure that we don't run afoul of main DEP's regulation and people weren't properly notified. That's all.
Sure, okay.
Thank you.
All right, if there are no other questions either back or forth, I thank you for coming to us, and we'll see you at the next of the preliminary.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Thanks for coming. The next item of business is a preliminary plan review for a major use site development entitled Grindel Pit for East Skip, Grindel and Sons Incorporated. Proposals to create a ten-acre gravel pit and access road on a forty-five-acre parcel, tax map sixty, lot eight, located on North Street. All of the subject property is located in the rural and limited residential zones. Is someone representing the applicant, please?
Yes, Stephen Salisbury for the applicant.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Thank you. We've come back with some additional information based on the comments we received in the March meeting. So we supplemented our application with that new information. And since that time, we've gotten our full water quality monitoring done, and that information has been supplied to the city staff. And we got a letter from Maine Historic, a letter no concern from Maine Historic. We also got a letter from the Director of Kids Peace, which you should have a copy of, expressing no concern about the gravel pit project. Because I think it was Pat Lyons that had expressed grave concerns about possibly disturbing the clients at Kids Peace, but I think that letter contradicts any, any information Pat shared with you last month. The staff had pointed out in their April seven memo to the planning board some concerns with the vernal pools that we had identified. And I, I just want to say that if, if in fact those are our vernal pools, we, we will find out in a few weeks. But irregardless of whether the vernal pools are or not, will affect our permitting for this project. May affect what we want to do with the remaining land in the future, but those vernal pools have no effect on these two gravel pits in the road that's under construction to access North Street, which has been cleared out and is under construction now. Questions?
Okay, questions for the questions from the planning board, please, if any?
I have a couple minor, actually. I, I thank you for showing the, the grading for the, the pit. I appreciate that. But what, so what I'm reading, and tell me if I'm wrong or not, that, that the bottom of the pit, pit two, okay, would be about the same elevation as the high water mark for the lake. Is that pretty close?
That's, that is, that is close, yes. You are correct.
Okay, so, so basically, there should be no influx of water into the pit. You know, not over ground, but, but through the ground, is that?
Yeah, that's right. And, and the elevation that I've listed for Grand Lake is a flood elevation. Normally, Grand Lake is four, four feet below that.
Got it.
Most often, or a whole lot less in the fall. But even in the springtime, it's going to be four feet less than one oh six.
Okay.
That's a fair question.
Thank you. The, there was a, I was out there recently, and there appears to be some work being done on clearing what appears to perhaps be where the drive, the driver road will go in off of North Street. Is that, is that correct that?
That is true. Yep, that road is under construction.
Okay. I, I, I asked mostly because that gives me a better feel in the field for how far it is from the, the one house that was close by. So, so, okay. I'm thrashing around here, so if anybody else has questions, that's fine.
I've got one. So the, the letter we received on the fifth from Haley Ward regarding the groundwater testing, does that satisfy the, the staff concern? The printed TRT we have shows a recommendation for incomplete due to the missing groundwater study. So is that letter, does that letter on the fifth satisfy that concern? This one's, I guess, for staff.
Sure. So the requirements for the groundwater impact analysis are right there in the preliminary submission requirements. So it hits on some of them. We do have the soil types, the depth to the water table at representative points. There's two different wells, and that jives with the state law that says you need one for every five acres. Drainage conditions are either in the report or somewhere else. And data on the existing quality, and then there's a, in the original submission, there's definitely information about the wells within two hundred feet. But two of the other things that it needs to do is to talk about projections of quality under drought conditions, which is likely what we're in now, and analysis and evaluation of the effect of the development on groundwater. So I think the people who've done that work so far are the appropriate professionals, probably. Had, you know, it, the ordinance talks about groundwater hydrology or an engineer. And that's the same thing as hydrogeology, they're geologists. So I'm sure Haley Ward has that expertise on site, but I don't know that it goes to that point of analysis required.
Okay, so staff's position remains that incomplete due to at least those two items above and beyond what the report provides that we have in hand.
Yeah, I would say so. And, you know, with regard to the vernal pools, Dwight may have some comment on this as well because he just has a relationship with the, the DEP person who has more information on the significance or the implications of having significant vernal pools, if that turns out to be what they are. But just having that information on the plan is part of the critical natural areas and the, so either they are areas that need to be shown on the plan, or they are not, and we do not really know until Haley Ward goes back out there and looks at it at a time when it's active and can determine whether they really are significant pools or not.
But, but the, the, the green shaded areas on this plan, though, those are the vernal pool areas if they are in fact vernal pools. Is that right?
Generally.
Yeah, okay. So my, my point being that all the green areas and the blue areas, I mean, there, there appears to be no overlap whatsoever, and the road avoids them and all that stuff. Would that be your argument, Steve?
That's right. Yeah, and the vernal pools do have a veil of protection, two hundred and fifty feet around them if they're significant. But you can do twenty-five percent clearing, even within that two hundred and fifty feet. And my argument would be, our clearing is under twenty-five percent because most of it is already blueberry field. There's been some clearing with the road, but that's, even the road follows the end of the field. So we're nowhere near the twenty-five percent threshold for clearing. So I, I, no, I'd say I'll deem them all significant vernal pools because there's no consequence to my project at this moment.
Other questions?
I just have an informational, I mean, this is, this is just my own personal whatever. On page thirty-seven of the document that you submitted, there's a thing called hall quarry equipment noise levels. The giant table there with what appear to be, I would assume, DVA levels. And the first column says the A weight, basically that, those are the, what we would just say, gee, you know, if the decibels of noise are, you know, what is it at the, whatever, that's that first column. Is that correct?
Yes, the weighted average of those different frequencies, like, that's, that's probably what a decimal meter is going to read.
Okay, got it. Okay, got it. That's what I thought. I just wanted to confirm. Thank you.
Sure.
I would just like to comment that a decimal meter is not necessarily a decimal meter in the sense that if it's weighted differently from the A, its scale, it's going to read differently. So does, does anyone know if the city has calibrated a, a weighted decimal meter? In order to enforce its own law, law of noise regulations?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Chairman, we do. The police department is going to be purchasing some, Glenn mentioned, police department is going to be enforcing the noise ordinance now. And they're going to be upgrading it. I believe they're going to have one for each cruiser once they get it going.
Okay, now the noise ordinance itself does not specify what meter should be used, what reading, if any, should be used. Is there plans then to revise the noise ordinance?
The noise ordinance has been revised and we have adopted a chart to go with it. It's basically based on OSHA standards. And that's available. And like I said, and the city did amend that to read. We ran into an issue where a gentleman did not think the police department, I was using the sound meter. He didn't think I had authority to use it because it wasn't dictated in the ordinance that a noise meter could be used. So we, that's been put in the ordinance now.
Oh, good.
And, and the ordinance, the ordinance that you circulated here a little while ago, that's the new one?
Yes, yes.
I would, I just have a general comment, which really doesn't have to do with this particular project. But, but both the, the development, well, you know, there's very little in the development ordinance about noise. I mean, there's, there's no numbers at all. It's not very quantitative. Whereas the ordinance itself does have some quantitative measures. But I would point out that if you look at standards that are done elsewhere, if you look at the Technical Assistance Bulletin from the state, State Planning Office about noise and so forth, it would seem that our standards are quite a bit higher in a bad way than those suggested under those bulletins and so forth. And that bulletin dates all the way back to May of two thousand. But they talk about fifty-five and sixty at fifty feet. And we're talking about eighty, right?
Right, that's the, that's the hazard level.
Right, that's the hazard level. But the question becomes for the purpose of the development, you know, what should the, you know, what, what, what's the noise at the, at the boundary of the development site versus, you know, adjacent uses and so forth? And, you know, it is what it is in terms of the rules right now. But what I'm suggesting is that we really do want to reexamine both the unified development, whatever it is, and, and also perhaps the noise ordinance to, to get those more in line with what appear to be kind of industry standards, if you will. Off of soapbox.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just make a couple of comments. I think Steve did an excellent job in the application, basically, especially like from page seven to page sixteen, in which he sets out, I mean, how the pit is actually going to be operated, how trees will be cut off it, you know, how the land will be reclaimed, revegetated. I mean, it's an excellent job of just exactly how they're going to operate this gravel pit, especially like the spill prevention, control and containment plan in which, you know, they address if hydraulic hose breaks on, on one of the machines, you know, what they're going to do to, to clean it up and keep it out of the groundwater as best they can. Because I noticed that like from pit two, the flow is towards pit one. But on the edge of pit one is, is one of the test wells, which I think is an excellent location for it. I think that gives, you know, a good sense, you know, if anything does get in the groundwater, you know, it's between the gravel pit and Kids Peace and it kind of protects Kids, Kids Peace. You know, if, if something does get in the groundwater, you know, they'll know about it ahead of time. So, I mean, I think, I think the way Steve has set this up is, is excellent. I kind of got an idea he's done this before.
Once or twice.
That's it for my comment.
Do you want those prioritized?
Does anyone else on the board have any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'd like to open the public hearing. Does any member of the public wish to comment upon this application?
We do have a, Paul Marino has their hand raised right now. Would you like to allow me to have them speak?
Yes, please.
All right, one moment. All right, Paul, if you can unmute, go right ahead.
I have. I spoke to Craig Cosbod from the Department of Transportation on March seventeenth. And what disturbed me about it is he said the permit for North Street was not for this project. That it was for a project with next to no traffic. He actually pulled a copy of it. And this is what he told me. So I would, wondering why we don't have actually a copy of that permit application included in the documentation? Because I asked him, since the subject had come up about why this driveway was different than another pit, which had more specific requirements for the driveway. I asked, I asked them about that. And he told me basically, this, this proposal is not what that permit was for. It was basically zero customers on an average per day. So they, they thought, they think this is a low use permit.
There's a driveway entrance permit on page twenty-six of the application.
Right, there is, for a, a, a pit and blueberries. But they were told it was going to be low traffic for that existing pit, not for this project. So that needs to be followed up. But I have another question. Seems that Kids Peace would like to improve the roadway that they currently have. So since regulations, my understanding is that it should be with the lower, the lower traffic road. I would suggest, particularly until this is cleared up, that we not consider North Street the primary roadway for this, until that's cleared up. Again, it was Mr. Craig Cosbod that I spoke to. I have his number. It's two oh seven, five nine two, two three three zero. I also spoke to someone else because I was concerned that they didn't have a representative present at the meeting. I spoke to the local Kids Peace and they said someone would be there, man who submitted the letter. But also the national headquarters, which I believe is in Pennsylvania. And I sent them a copy of the plan. They seemed unaware of this. And we're forwarding it to some of their staff there. So the local Kids Peace is one thing, but the nationals seem to be unaware of this project. And that concerned me. I think we need to hear from Kids Peace, not just locally, but nationally, because they, they just got a copy in about, about ten days ago of this plan. Those are my concerns.
Have you anything else for us, Mr. Marino?
No, that's pretty much everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else, any other member of the public who wishes to speak? Nate and Carrie?
I have nobody else requesting inside of Zoom right now.
Okay, Carrie, any comments on your end?
No comments on my end, John. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Hearing that, I shall close the public hearing. Back to the planning board. Have you any other questions for the applicant? Does the applicant have any response to the public comment?
My, my question is exactly that of both, for both Steve and Elena, both is, you know, especially about the MDOT approval or lack thereof, or confusion or whatever. Can you say, make any comments about that?
Our application is clear for a gravel pit. And the next level of permitting would be a traffic movement permit where you have a hundred trips in one hour. Certainly not going to be any, anywhere near that kind of traffic level. There's a few trucks. Depending on where Skip Grindel's projects are, maybe quite a few trips in and out if the job is close by. And some days, probably won't be anybody coming and going out of that pit. So it could be quiet for a length of time. But the DOT knew exactly what was going in there and approved the permit. And it's got plenty site visibility. And everybody has been telling us to use North Street and not Patriots Road and Kids Peace Road for the primary access. So that's where we're going to leave the access is, is coming into our street.
Thank you. Any, any other questions or comments from the board or staff? Okay, what would the board like to do on this matter, then?
Well, just, I guess just another comment to staff. I mean, I guess it'd be prudent to double check the issue with, with MDOT and have staff contact Mr. Cosbod to just make sure he understood, you know, what it was he was permitting. I mean, it seems to be all in order, but the issue's been raised. So I think it's incumbent upon us to, to double check with MDOT to, to make, to make sure that they're approving a row, an entrance for what's going to take place.
Yeah, we can do that.
I would remind the board and the public that this is a preliminary review. Or the scope of our review is to find, is to determine whether this is a complete application or not. If there are no other interactions here, does someone have a motion regarding completeness, please?
I do. Motion to that the preliminary plan for the Grindle pit is in fact complete. And I think that's all you need to hear. Yeah.
Second. Any discussion, please? All those in favor, raise a hand, please. Okay. Steve, you can come back to us with a final plan whenever you feel it's suitable. How's that? Throw it all right back in your lap.
Great.
Okay.
We'll be back.
And we'll be pleased to see you, I'm sure.
Because we see you every meeting and we'd miss you otherwise.
Oh, I know.
Yeah. Well, you know, Steve, if business should be terrible, you can always consider joining, rejoining the planning board when we have a vacancy.
Oh, dear. I'm already on appeals board. I like it.
That sounds like a conflict of interest if I ever heard one, but, you know.
Well, he could resign from the appeals board. We're much nicer.
No, I meant, I meant how often he joins us versus.
Oh, no, he can, he can come and go, I think. Anyhow.
I, I would just like to, to make sure that the comments about the need to revise or at least examine the, the noise ordinance and the, the development ordinance with respect to appropriate noise levels and so forth. Just want to make sure that that's in the record either here or separately.
Should be part of our minutes, I would think.
That's what I'm hoping.
Okay, now. The next item has a preliminary, pre-application plan review, which is it, I'm wondering, but for an interior subdivision to an existing building entitled, Carrie, trying to see this word here, Corriglia LLC for Dr. Penelope Houghton. Proposal is to subdivide an existing building located on six, on a sixteen thousand, one hundred and seventy, one hundred seventeen square foot lot located at seventy-one Oak Street, Tax Act one thirty-six, lot twenty-four, into four professional office spaces in the downtown zone. I will be recusing myself in this matter because I do know Dr. Houghton. And I just want to make sure there's no no one perceives this as a conflict of interest. Would the vice chair please take over?
Okay, someone in here representing the applicant?
Yes, Carla Haskell, architect, and Penelope is here as well.
The floor is all yours, Ms. Haskell.
Great, thank you. I will share my screen. The project is fairly simple. The existing, there's an existing house that an office had occupied prior to Ms. Houghton purchasing the property. The existing driveway, you can see as a lighter line provided for about, I think my application has four to six spaces. Maybe four. And the improvements that we're requesting for the interior subdivision include separating the building into four offices and adding, as you can see in the site plan, more parking spaces to the south side of the property. Code discussions with the town, the city, we're proposing a ramp off of the existing, there's an existing entry porch. And through discussions with police and fire, there is an existing, or a new proposed exit stair from the second floor. We, with the technical review team, there were concerns about making sure that the, the signage that's proposed in the front yard be out of the right of way of, of Oak Street. We've confirmed the, the visual triangle from that corner. And this new gra, it will be gravel parking. It will not be asphalt. This is existing and in fact, there'll be no improvements of the existing driveway. Go next to the interior plan. The, the old house is sort of set up nicely for offices. You can see, here's the existing entry porch, new proposed ramp. The, there was an entry. It was a kitchen, but it's now becoming an entryway. This first floor will be part of Ms. Houghton's office. And then upstairs, you see that there'll be three separate offices. We have tenant office two, three, and four with the remaining spaces. The center portion, right off of Stairway, is going to be a common waiting room for the, for the, the tenants. And it's from this waiting area, which will be common to everyone, that the exit stair is going to be placed as well as an, and a door as well. A new, new exit door. Are there any questions?
One question. In the application, it, it says there's going to be four offices. Now, on the first floor, is the owners going to occupy tenant space one, office two, and office three? Is that because on the second floor, you have three offices? That's just a little confusing.
It is a little confusing, but yes, that is correct. So there'll be total four subdivided offices, one of which is the owner's.
Or the, I'm one of the tenants and I'm using three rooms as my office.
Okay, so just a little confusing that there's office two, office three, office two, three, and four. Okay, so just a little confusing that there's office two, office three, office two, three, and four. Okay.
Yeah, really, it's all suite 1A with the post office. That's probably how I'll refer to it.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from the board or questions?
I got a couple. I would like to see on the, on the final plan, the actual dimensions for the parking areas and so forth. You know, you, you show proposed gravel parking, and then you show proposed parking, parking lines. I would suggest that parking lines on gravel are pretty hard to maintain, but it would be good if we had the dimensions, you know, if the lines or the absence thereof doesn't make much difference. The other thing is, any problem with the fact that two of the spaces are in front of a garage with double doors there? Is that an issue of any sort? And, and if it's, you know, those spaces are going to be assigned to the owner, I mean, that's all well and good. I just would like clarification of that.
The, I guess the owner could address the use of the garage. The, the actual required number of spaces based on the foot area is five. The owner would like to have a few extra, so that's why we are asking for a few more. And Penelope, do you want to address the use of the garage, how that's going to be?
That, that's fine. What you've said is actually enough for me.
Okay.
The TRT people talked about the E911 address sign. I assume that this drawing was before that meeting? And what they're worried about is the location that's shown on the drawing. Is that correct?
I, yeah, I guess I did bet this was the location that they had assigned, but we'll certainly change that if in fact that's.
Well, you know, I guess the point is that it's basically for fire and police to respond, right? And you can't see it from the street. So at, at least that's my understanding of the way it's supposed to be, right? So
We've, we've marked it at the front entrance, or what we're calling the entrance.
Right, but here's the road out here, and you can't see that the road is to the right in the drawing, and you can't see the location of the sign from the street.
We'll confirm that with, with the fire.
Does the fire, do the fire folks have any issues with turnarounds on the, on the site or anything, or don't they need to actually do that? In other words, they can fight the fire from any fire, not that you're going to.
Yeah, because, and I, I don't know if if they're here to speak. The idea is that this is a fairly, this is not a long driveway, and so in fact, I think they were satisfied with.
They did not, they may not even require a turnaround. That's fine if, if, if they're good with it. That's it for me.
Well, seeing as you brought up the fire issues, is Thomas still here? Is the fire inspector still with us?
He seems to be coming and going.
I mean, Dwight, has, has the fire department brought up any issues about that that Rich just asked about?
Not that I'm aware of. Thomas has been working very closely with the general contractor for the project as far as getting the entrance done. He hasn't mentioned anything about, I would imagine, as Mr. Lyle said, they would probably fight that from the road anyway. You're not going to want to get a fire truck up beside a building that's burning. They could probably reach it with the ladder truck anyway. But I'll talk to Thomas tomorrow and make sure that everything's all set for the next, next meet.
Yeah, we did, we did meet with the fire department at the TRT, and they did not request it, but absolutely will check.
Right, you mentioned that Tom was, was working with the contractor on the, on the, on the driveway. That's actually.
Not the driveway on the fire escape and things like that.
Okay.
The driveway, the driveway is not going to change. It's going to remain just as it is, from my understanding.
I guess I'd have to ask, and looking back on, on the Union Street office subdivision, I get pretty much just restricted to the interior of the building. I mean, I'll make a comment about the driveway. I mean, the, there's going to be more use there. I think the site visibility there, I mean, it's on a bad, bad area on Oak Street. I mean, whatever could be done to increase visibility, maybe straighten out that driveway, you know, maybe we can't demand that be done, but I think, I think it would help out to perhaps prevent a crash or two.
They, they did address the visibility triangle on the plan. That would be clear of vegetation, so as you come down, you're going to be able to look up towards Bangor a little easier than what you can right now. But I'll mention that to Thomas also and see what his feeling is with the fire truck, and how staff can also look at that too, John.
Okay, appreciate it. Is there any other questions from, from the board members? Carla, could you take the plan off the screen, please? Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? This is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. Nate, is there any comments or emails?
Nothing on the Zoom side.
Carrie?
No emails on my end.
Okay, and I'll close the public hearing. Any other questions or comments from the board? Somebody have a motion?
I'll move that the preliminary pre-application plan review for an interior subdivision to an existing building entitled Corriglia LLC for Dr. Penelope Houghton. The proposal is to subdivide the existing building located on 16,117 square feet, lot located at 71 Oak Street, Tax Map 136, Lot 124, into four professional office spaces in the downtown zone is complete.
Is there a second?
Okay.
And all in favor, please raise your hand. opposed? Are you voting, Mark?
Actually, I know Penelope, and I think I should recuse myself from this vote.
Okay.
Penelope knows too many people.
Okay, so I think I saw your hand go up, right, Molly, you were voting? Okay, I thought I did. Okay. I guess Carrie just it's four to zero on the votes, two abstentions. I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I've unmuted myself. Thank you. That completes the agenda, except for the matter of adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Question before we leave?
Sure.
What's the status of the letter to council and so forth on the, in support of the comprehensive plan?
Can't hear you. What'd you say? I have fallen down on that, okay. I'm making myself a big now to deal with that.
Do I need to come to your house, John, and, you know, like?
Yeah, maybe, you never know. Are those all CDs behind you?
They are.
Ah, hmm. I need to talk to you about your audio system at some point. I have surplus stuff.
You told me that a long time ago.
Yes. What's, never mind. Letter.
I'll make a motion to adjourn then.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of adjournment, please? We stand adjourned. Thank you all.
Been real, kids. Thank you.
Good night.
Night.